I follow this meeting, the Upstate County Commission to Order. We'll have a moment of silence, then a tapestry fair followed by a pledge of allegiance and approval of the minutes from our September 28, 2017 meeting.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is saying, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in sight.
The commissioners reviewed the minutes from September 28, 2017?
I have.
Are there any additions or corrections?
No.
If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to second, all favoritism by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposition no, ayes have it. Our scheduled appointments this morning are at 9:10 a.m., Laura B. Meadows, Executive Director, Upstate County Convention Visiting Bureau, discuss sound system installation on Main Street and the amount of monetary contribution needed to complete this project. At 9:30, Lori Aldridge Harvey, Upstate County Family Resource Network Director, presentation of Propagation of Upstate County Odd Socks Day, October 6, 2017. We've got a few more minutes, I will write for discussion, action, approval. Item 1, approval and signature of letter to Fulton Financial Advisory regarding James W. Curry, revocable trust agreement. The commission is rescinding the previous request to disperse an additional 10% of the interest earned in fiscal year 17 to each of the James Curry W. Library and Park. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. It's been moved to second, all favoritism by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposition no, ayes have it. Item 2, approval and signature of the West Virginia Division of Homeland Security Grant Program 2017 sub grant application. The Upstate County Office of Emergency Management is requesting grant funds in the amount of $159,838 to be used for equipment. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved to second, all favoritism by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposition no, ayes have it. Item 3, correspondence from Carol J. Smith, Upstate County Clerk, announcing the retirement of Carolyn S. Tenney, Deputy County Clerk, effective December 8, 2017. Item 4, correspondence from Carol J. Smith, Upstate County Clerk, requesting the employment of Geneva P. Page as a full-time Deputy County Clerk, effective October 10, 2017, pending background check results. Upon approval, Mrs. Page ready to pay will be $10 per hour. Do they have anything in the office? Discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Discussion, that's coming in $10 now, or was the hourly rate before?
$10.66, that's what it is. So the money's in the budget.
With that being said, is that what we're starting? I know we're trying to get our other employees up, and we gave them all favoritism, 3%, we gave the higher employees last year. And you had the money in your budget for this, correct?
I did, yes. And as you recall, last year, or in February, when I had a deputy leave, we did not replace her. And I feel that they've taken on extra duties, they're working extra harder, we're not replacing the person, and they deserve more money.
And I also think this person is a good pick.
Yes.
Because I think she has worked here in different offices, and then now stands in the job for the messaging side of things here in Upstate County. So with that...
And she comes with a lot of knowledge.
What's that?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved to second, all favoritism by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposition no, ayes have it. Item 5, correspondence from Carol J. Smith, Upstate County Clerk, requesting the employment of Kelly Pedmer as a full-time Deputy County Clerk, effective October 23, 2017, pending background check results. Upon approval, Mrs. Pedmer is ready to pay will be $10 per hour.
Okay, just let me sidewalk that. When Carolyn turned in her resignation as retirement, I would like, she does a lot of stuff in the vital registration side that a lot of people don't do. It would be to my advantage and to everyone's advantage that we get this person on board as a machine trainer. This person also, as we've discussed at different times of the season, I'm sure you keep a person trained as a relief for bookkeeping. So once they're trained in vital registration, my goal is to make her to be an assistant bookkeeper or backup bookkeeper. So therefore, in this case, I'm asking for $10. Now, she has a degree, a four-year college degree in business administration, I think she'd be a good fit.
Carolyn, she's covered, helped cover for you before you brought Debbie, correct?
Uh, not Carolyn Tenney, that was Carolyn Perry. Carolyn Tenney pretty much runs the rest of the office.
Russell.
She does, all of the registrations for first, ex, marriages, you know, she's just, and we're truly gonna miss her.
Yeah, she does an outstanding job.
She definitely does.
I'd like to see her go.
Yes, and she always talks, which is a great thing.
How long has she been?
Carolyn has worked, uh, just a little over five years.
And what does she make in there?
She makes $10.66.
So basically, you're bringing these two in, and when we go, if we approve this one, it'll be sixty-some cents savings to the county.
Yes.
And we're getting a lady here that's got a four-year degree, that will be a benefit to your office, you believe?
Absolutely.
Carolyn? We have one retired, and we have a replacement for it.
We, Quayla, that resigned after she didn't come back from the murder of baby. Geneva or Russell will be replacing Quayla. So that's why I just haven't had time with Lashin coming around, and I just haven't had time to do my interviews, and I just didn't get it completed.
Okay, so motion approved.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved to second, all favoritism by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposition no, ayes have it. Item 6, no, it's 10, no, we'll move it where I can, not, not appointment. Laura B. Meadows, Executive Director, Upstate County Convention Visiting Bureau?
All right. I don't have tons of copies, but I've got enough if you want to share. That should be through there. All right, so I'm here to talk about a project that I think has been discussed, and it's actually existed on Main Street, probably 10, 15 years ago, but that's a sound system on Main Street. The sound system that was in place multiple years ago, I'm thinking 10, 15 years ago, it's not functioning right now, it's outdated, the whole thing. I spoke last night at Sue, but I said, I've been with this position for six years now, and even for my birthday, I remember a discussion about sound on Main Street, and how amazing would that be, and, you know, what kind of atmosphere that would include onto our downtown streets, and, you know, add to the flowers. Everybody knows by can or Main Street. So the discussion of sound and having Christmas music would just kind of add to that whole atmosphere. You know, we started looking at this a few years ago, it got tossed around, but it never went anywhere. You can see, this is a new quote, September of 2017, but actually, about a year ago, we worked with Micrologic, and they put together a quote for us, and we presented it to the city with the anticipation that the city would be able to cover the bulk of the expense. At that time, it was $25,000, and it just wasn't something the city was able to handle on their own. We've been fortunate to have a savings account that's healthy, and my board members keep saying, Lori, you've got to spend it, you can't just let it sit. So we brainstormed, and we came up with, why can't we invest in a sound system on Main Street? So we went back to Micrologic. Since a year ago, the quote has adjusted a little bit to 27,500, and my board felt comfortable with putting $25,000 into this system. So that loses with the difference of $2,500. Let me tell you a little bit about the system, too. So it's more than just music on Main Street, which that's gonna be amazing in itself. This system will also have microphone inputs at three, possibly four different locations. One would be on the courthouse steps for public events, one would be at the Chamber Visitor Center office, the other one would be located at City Hall, and the fourth potential one will be down at Jobin Park. So what those access points will do, they'll be outdoor, weatherproof, lockable boxes, where whenever somebody has access to them, we can unlock them, they can plug in a microphone, they can plug in an auxiliary cord and play music. But the function for that would be, like during Strawberry Festival, there's something always happening on the courthouse steps, the strawberry auction, the Swedish bear contest, all the music events. Somebody can plug a microphone into there and broadcast all of our Main Street, down into Jobin Park, and say, hey, we're starting the strawberry auction in 10 minutes, come up to the courthouse steps, be a part of this great event. And that's how I kind of envisioned the microphone function working, very brief, short announcements. It can also be used as a safety feature, if we're having strawberry festival again, or any other large event on Main Street, and there's a missing child, that announcement can be made over the loudspeaker, and everybody on Main Street's gonna hear that. One thing that we want to do with our financial contribution of $25,000 is just kind of handle the day-to-day logistics of the music. We would, of course, work with everybody to know, you know, volume levels, music types, appropriate times, inappropriate times, and all that kind of stuff, but we would handle the day-to-day administration of the sound system. I don't know, it's, it's gonna cover all of Main Street, the power poles will actually alternate, or the speakers will alternate on the light poles on Main Street. They'll be run with fiber rather than, you know, wireless systems, so they're gonna be hardwired in, it's gonna be incredibly reliable. Trying to think if there's anything else with this. Do you have any questions?
Uh-huh.
What?
Couple.
Okay.
Would this, would this have a wireless capability? And what comes to mind, the groundbreaking at the Innovation Center, would they be able to somehow get into the system from that location to broadcast what's going on?
Possibly. Yeah, because, so, I don't know all the technical aspects of it, but right now, there's some empty conduit, and Micrologic can run their fiber in, and I don't know at that point if they can run fiber from the light poles into the Innovation Center, is that kind of what you're thinking?
No, 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 just for the groundbreaking ceremony or something like that.
Oh, yeah.
Something that's happening at different locations.
Yeah, absolutely. Now, there's not an access point for a microphone at the Innovation Center, if that's something that Rob was interested in, incorporating that, I mean, we would definitely be open to that. And the other cool thing about this is you can grid this off, so you can say, okay, on this end of Main Street, we have the courthouse entertainment happening, but we still want music happening down at Jobin, we can manually flip some switches and make that happen, so we can have one thing happening on one end of Main Street, and the other end can still have music rolling. The bulk, the main brain of the system would be at City Hall, so this is definitely a partnership effort with city resources, just because that's where all the fiber ties into, just makes sense that, you know, it's in their infrastructure. But like I said, we would handle just the day-to-day aspect. Now, I'm coming to you all to ask $2,500 towards this project. Tonight, we're on the city council agenda to kind of discuss this as well, and I'm not sure what their decision's gonna be, but I anticipate, right now, this project is for Main Street. We definitely want to have Jobin done, but to include Jobin, it's probably approximately an additional $5,000, and I'm anticipating that the city discusses that tonight and hopefully approve that they cover all of Jobin Park. And I think they have some interest in using this system possibly with a public safety complex in the future as well, maybe not immediately, but to know that they can build upon it.
So this is, this has helped the strawberry festival for our hall, or is it actually to use Main Street?
Yeah, and that's one of the things whenever, whenever we were trying to think of what project could we do that we can invest into the community that's not just, you know, just a CBB project. So this is gonna be strawberry festival, festival Fridays, blast from the past, which they've actually fundraised, and I believe they have $1,000 to go towards this project. Blast from the past, any, any public event, and again, if there's somebody that wants to access the system, they're gonna be able to come to us, and we're gonna help facilitate that.
Who would be responsible for, like, say, if there was an issue with it, have we figured that out? Who would?
Yeah, it's gonna be us, and Micrologic, of course, is installing the system, so we talked to them about, you know, what's the longevity of the system, what if something does break? And they said, honestly, because it runs with fiber and it's hardwired and everything's very secure, we really don't anticipate that being an issue. The worst thing that happens is maybe a speaker blows, and that's the least costly expense of the entire system, so we might have to replace the speakers here and there. The outdoor access panels that would be located throughout Main Street are weather-tight, lockable, you can actually, even if somebody, we worry about somebody busting into it and plugging something in and broadcasting whatever they wanted, but we can manually turn these off, so even if somebody did bust in, plug something in, they're still not able to broadcast. We would just flip it on whenever we knew it was gonna be used and flip it back off.
And it can be, I mean, I've heard you talk last night, should this is sectioned off throughout the different blocks, or?
Right.
Would courthouse have its own? Is that possible?
You, the courthouse, not with this, I mean, for, at expense, definitely, but that main brain where you manually flip the switches will be in City Hall. So what will happen is, if we want everything turned off, so just to keep the system safe, City Hall, we would just call them, they'd flip everything off, and then again, if courthouse was gonna be active, we would just have them pull that switch on, and we would make it live.
I think it's a good project, personally, I think it'd be a good addition for downtown from a couple different aspects, all the safety, entertainment. It would be nice to have Christmas music in the background playing during the season and all that.
It supports so many different community organizations, too. And that, like Sam said, that's our goal, is to hopefully get this up before Christmas season.
So do I have a motion?
So move.
For a second?
I'd like to see what the city's gonna do. With that being said, I see several benefits. I mean, from getting cars moved off Main Street, from having them towed, to strawberry festivals, things, lots of kids and stuff, the announcement, I see several benefits. I'm not against this, matter of fact, I'm for this, I'd just like to see what the contribution the city was gonna to make before I decide to make a donation of $2,500 from the county, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Since we haven't donated to anything else so far, you know what I mean?
And I will point out, part of this, this quote incorporates some city resources, they're gonna go around and they're gonna lift the base of the light poles, and as they lift it, Micrologic's gonna go through and do the work that they need to do around the fiber. So the city, at this point, is doing some income work, but you're right, I mean, we're gonna hunt out tonight if we're gonna have a financial contribution.
I think it's a great plan, a great idea, I just want to see where the city stands.
Sure.
And then Sam wants to have maybe something, the courthouse on its own, flipping a switch at 7 o'clock that's maintained down at the City Hall. You'd have to have somebody come into City Hall, I understand that, like, flip the switch, so you would have it here at the courthouse, and at midnight, with 1:00, you'd have to have somebody at the city, come back down to city, and flip the switch. So when Sam mentioned he'd kind of like to have maybe our own connection here, I think that would be a plus factor to it. I think we need one place where we can turn them all on, you know what I mean?
Well, I, I will clarify this, because again, I'm not good with the technical side of things, but I know that the flips, the switches that we can flip is just to turn something like permanently on or off, but for the main purpose, I believe everything will always be on for the, for the sake of just playing music. So that should always be, and it might even be remotely controlled, we're still kind of getting into the nitty-gritty of how it's gonna be managed, but yeah, I can only see what you're saying.
So our box would be live, but to the time then, just unlock it and plug into it?
Yeah, I think so, but then if we had any concerns, or if we knew it was gonna be four months and nobody's gonna be using it, we would probably just turn it down, so that way mic and auxiliary cords couldn't be plugged in, but the speakers on the side of Main Street would still be live. But that way, that pan on that box wouldn't be accessible.
What kind of motion do I have, second? I'll second. It's been moved to second, all favoritism by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposition no?
No.
Ayes have it.
I'll update you all tomorrow.
And I'd like to clarify mine, though, I'd just like to know where the city...
Sure.
Stand on that, not only that, but I don't know, the things this commission has gave money to this year. I think it is something needed to be done, I think it is a good call, and I'm not sitting here saying I'm not for it, you know what I mean? I just would like to know what the city's gonna do before I commit. With that being said, I really don't need to know that now, because it's already been approved.
I'll still give you all an update tomorrow morning to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Always good to have you.
Thank you.
Our next appointment's at 9:30, and we'll be going, we've got about 10 minutes. Item 6, correspondence from Greg Harris, Facility Director, requesting approval for Loretta L. Coon, current part-time seasonal employee, to be utilized on an as-needed basis to maintain various county-owned properties from November 5, 2017, through March 3, 2018. If approved, Mrs. Coon will work no more than 200 hours during this period at a wage rate of $9.50 per hour. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved to second, all favoritism by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposition no?
Ayes have it.
Item 7, approval of Louis Upsher, annual volunteer, Charlene Dean, Herbie White, Carol McCain, and Crystal Corrigan. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
It's been moved to second, all favoritism by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposition no?
Ayes have it.
Your information items, item 1, correspondence from Sarah J. Brown, senior justice program spaceless, Will Stein, David E. Godwin, Upstate County Prosecuting Attorney, that they will, they have been recommended for fiscal year 2017 victim of crime act go-through grant. Awards funded, funding in the amount of $34,662. The governor will be awarding the victim of crime act grant sometime in October. Item 2, Upstate County D-911 Communications Report for August 2017. Item 3, Upstate County Building Permits, 2000, September 2017. Item 4, by hand fire department media release, outdoor burning. Item 5, newsletters and/or event notifications. Item 6, agendas and/or notice of meetings. Item 7, meeting minutes. Item 8, meetings. Appointment needed or upcoming, Upstate County Fire Board, community representative from the 3rd District, June 30, 2017, if anybody's interested, lives in the 3rd District, glad to talk to you. Tabled items, US, item 1, US Census Bureau, local updated census address project, did you give a match for us?
Do I make an announcement? Happy birthday, birthday to Buddy yesterday, happy birthday to Terry today.
Oh, thank you. Happy birthday.
And I wouldn't just get him to respect his health, you know what I mean? He'll be able to...
Are you not resentful?
We don't have a kids system yet.
If you'd like everybody, you know, make sure I... Get through the meeting, you know what I mean?
I got some good sound over here.
And I'd like to make an announcement, too. Tomorrow at 7 o'clock, Bookseal is having a social up there, anybody who'd like to come, I'm sure there's cake walks there, it'll be live music, and options and everything, so if you're in the neighborhood and you don't have anything to do at 7 o'clock...
Is that tomorrow, Saturday?
It is tomorrow.
It's tomorrow?
Yeah.
It's a good time.
Can I make an announcement from 4?
Being from Randolph County, we would cordially invite all of y'all to attend the Mountain State Forest Festival. It's happening at the Speed Cam this weekend, we'll have the parade inside, we'll be trimming a great plenty of water, there's sand, it's gonna be 85, 86 degrees. But we'd be more than happy to have y'all, as y'all are happy to have us at the strawberry festival, so thank you.
Well, we appreciate that, thank you.
Is that gonna be a record temperature for Forest Festival?
I don't know, I don't know.
I don't know.
But at least you're not wearing boots down from, you know, 12 to 1:30, and then stripping the use down off under where the sunscreen is for the rest of it, you know?
And the rain's coming in sun, which will work out a lot.
I don't know, I'll tell you what, this is the time of year the weather could change a little.
We need to be back to item number 3, too.
I've picked 5 counties, there are only 6 counties, sign up if you do.
So far, they have until, I think, December, and this process did state that even if the county cannot participate in a thorough, full county review, a partial review of the selected areas of the county that may be experiencing housing changes, would help ensure more accurate count of the population. So fortunately, what she did is one of the handful of states that submitted addresses digitally for the digital files to the census, so she believes that they should be pretty up to date and should require minimal changes. But they are gonna be having a training event where that Terry Javon has planned on attending to obtain more information from.
I think we should wait until Terry Javon... Because it's obvious this lady's gonna get back to some questions we had, and we're gonna make a decision from that. Okay, thanks, Kevin. But item 4, which I...
That's, well, you said, no, that's my motion, Terry. I think it was just an announcement.
Does she have a special announcement?
I mean, she did have one, or attached to it.
I would say, that would be, I think, approval.
Would you like it approved? It doesn't matter, she's on retirement, you have to approve.
We get it always approved, you know what I mean? That's basically everything.
I believe you, I think there's a saying...
Upstate County.
Well, if they don't need to, we won't.
If we should, we will.
Whatever you want to do.
We're willing. The next regular meeting at Upstate County Convention is October 12, 2017, 9:00 a.m., Upstate County Courthouse Saturday. It's 9:30, Lori Aldridge Harvey, Upstate County Family Resource Network, presentation of Propagation of Upstate County Odd Socks Day, October 6, 2017.
If I'd known it would be Monday, I would have brought cupcakes this morning. Big for you, big for you. I sense you're the wise old man.
I had it now to wear, I can taste it.
Yeah.
Have you gotten another pair of dish like this?
It's all right. We got one of those.
Lori, Lori, have you got another pair of dish like this?
No, no, actually, I bought one with Smack. That's the big thing now, so it would be easy to buy it. A few of them I had to, not those. I actually have a gun, you know, because whenever we're done, we do the, you know, what if we didn't figure it? We're all gonna wear odd socks and take a picture. Because I even wore mine today. I'm that girl. So you just never know, it's on underneath it.
Let me turn everything on my desk, it's all upside down here, and then...
Are we focusing this time? Okay, we're focusing this time. You're another year older, so this might be worse this summer. Upstate County Odd Socks Day, I tried to pick this up, it's more of a movement that's been in Australia, but I thought, you know, it's gonna get some attention, let's just try it out here, see what happens. The, let's see, National Alliance on Mental Illness actually does this in Australia, but we have other initiatives, like last month was Suicide Awareness Month, there's a Mental Health Awareness Month in the spring, but the first week of October is Mental Illness Awareness Week. And the reason why I kind of decided to break socks, one thing, you know, it's one thing to have an odd day everyone ever looks at, mental illness, they don't ever look at, they see it as a stigma. And just like I showed you, you never know what's going on with somebody. Because, did you not have Batman socks on? No. So it's all, you know, a lot of people keep it bottom up inside. A lot of people, I mean, the stigma is serious. There are a lot of people that don't seek treatment because of their personal or work relationships. A lot of people are really, they're really concerned about if my employer knows, will they get rid of me? Or will they think I'm unsafe, or will they think I can't do my job? Some put it off because of medications and therapy costs money. If their insurance doesn't cover it, then that just makes the problem a little bit worse because, you know, they really do need help and they're not getting the help they need. And then, let's see, we've also, I know a friend who's done this. Some doctors, they see a patient, especially a younger female, and say, oh, you're just a little stressed. Don't worry about it, you're just stressed. And then that little bit of stress turns into a severe illness on downward. So unfortunately, I've seen that happen before. And it's, it's distressing because, you know, if you can help it to begin with before it escalates, it helps the person, it helps the family, it helps, if you want to get down to the financial part of it, it even helps, you know, with doctors and that sort of thing. But I'm going to read the proclamation now, Terry.
I'm listening.
Okay, because it's a little bit long. Whereas during Mental Illness Awareness Week, on October first through seventh, two thousand seventeen, National Alliance on Mental Illness, which is NAMI, and participants across the country are raising awareness of mental illness. Each year, NAMI fights stigma, provides support, educates the public, and advocates for equal care. Every year, the movement grows stronger. And whereas a mental illness is a condition that affects a person's thinking, feeling, or mood, such conditions may affect someone's ability to relate to others and function each day. However, some mental illnesses are very mild. Each person will have different experiences, even people with the same diagnosis. And whereas recovery, including reading, oral, and social life, social, school, and work, is possible, especially when you start treatment early and play a strong role in your own recovery process. And whereas one in five adults experience a mental health condition every year, one in seventeen people lives with a serious mental illness such as depression, anxiety, schizophrenia, or bipolar disorder, disorder, for example. In addition to a person directly experiencing a mental illness, family, friends, and communities are also affected. And whereas half of mental health conditions begin by age of fourteen and seventy-five percent of mental health conditions develop before twenty, before age twenty-four. That was the friend I was talking about, that statistic goes right there. The normal personality and behavior changes of adolescents may mimic or mask symptoms of mental health conditions. Early engagement and support are crucial to improving outcomes and increasing the promise of recovery. And whereas the need to eliminate stigma is nothing new. Fifteen years ago, a U.S. Surgeon General's report on mental health, the first and only one to date, identified stigma as a public health concern that leads people to avoid living, socializing, or working with, renting to, or employing individuals with mental illness. Thanks to stigma, people living with mental illness conditions are often alienated and seen as others, perceived as dangerous, seen as irresponsible or unable to make their decisions, less likely to be hired, less likely to get safe housing, more likely to be criminalized and offered healthcare services, afraid of rejection to the point that they don't always pursue opportunities. And whereas, let it be known, Upsher County, West Virginia is working to reduce that stigma in two thousand seventeen by raising awareness by wearing odd socks for Odd Sox Day on October sixth, two thousand seventeen. By wearing odd socks, we can show in a united manner that anyone can have an odd day and there's no stigma. However, those with a stigma stemming from mental illnesses shouldn't, excuse me, should have no stigma that keeps any person from receiving help for their mental health issues and being treated with no prejudice. Having any type of odd socks, whether the pattern is wild, they're mismatched, et cetera, is okay. We need to remember mental illnesses are all different and that's okay too. So, says now therefore be proclaimed that Upsher County Commission hereby recognizes and supports Upsher County Odd Sox Day on October sixth in Upsher County and encourages all citizens to wear a pair of odd socks on October sixth to help raise awareness and reduce the stigma that surrounds mental health and the access to mental healthcare. So I'm hoping by starting this, this year, next year, we can start it earlier. And I want to display odd socks in our office, if you want to write on them or not, but clean odd socks. But, clean. But it was just something that, you know, not a lot of people in the U.S. are going to have like. It's kind of a, it catches your eye, it catches your thoughts too, odd sock.
And I would say there's nobody in this room that doesn't know someone. You all mean that they can relate to it? That has had a problem, dealing with a problem, been through a problem, you know what I mean?
Or currently dealing with a problem.
Or currently dealing with a problem.
Yeah. So it's just something that's near, you're in my heart for different reasons, but. So do you all want to?
You agree with proclamation, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. You're moved and seconded, all favor say if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Pose no? Aye, say aye.
Can we put a sock on, get our, get our socks on?
Do what?
Can we put a sock on and get our pictures?
Put our socks on?
Why do you think I brought them?
They fit in there.
Huh?
They fit in there. I mean, didn't fit.
Oh, your birthday. He can slip one over, because just like you couldn't find them from inside, because they don't have very specific socks in the inside. It's true.
Can I look, how can I get a picture of this down?
Oh, I forgot.
You can drive downtown then.
I forgot my camera, but she's going to take lots of pictures. Yeah, lots.
We'll just put our feet right up.
There you go.
We're sitting back. And the public will go.
You can do that.
Where do they want to do that?
I'll get a good picture that way.
I was about to say.
I don't know.
Why don't we have them sitting on the bench? Maybe I'll stand up there.
Looking good, Terry.
Oh, you good. You got the cap on.
I put it together on the cap.
I don't see him, Sam. There we go, all of them's pretty.
All right, everyone come down here.